The Z will be next anyway, so I'll hand it to her. And then if I didn't...
Well, there's some ladies in that one. Yes, it's like...
There's still a job shortage? A worker shortage?
I'll think of that. I was asking... I might have this. Yeah. That'll do it. Yeah. You don't know where it's... So, yeah.
Probably college. You could probably...
That's what I keep on...
I think that's a...
I got to say, my colleagues now, that's been a...
Alright. It's just over there.
I don't like...
I'm not for sure if that's...
Well, yeah.
It's making her really itchy, but it's not an exterior, right? Sure. And so she went on. So I was waiting to make. And I saw this like big star. But, um, the baby's big. They measure his feet or they say, oh my god, he's gonna be tough.
It's a boy?
Boy. No. This is our daughter Lauren, middle, uh, middle trash. Yeah. She said she was okay. Yeah, so, yeah, we're gonna be out of town next week and they just told us yesterday is that she's been going to the doctor about every four days. So just checking on her test, test, working all the stuff, doing it in the morning and her enzymes were just not too high. So I'm gonna check in Sunday and maybe see. And they're taking our nine, showing his nine year old here now. Now, four months, we'll see the relatives probably last month. We're like, we're invited to go anywhere. And so, um, as we go, we're in Southwest, we're sort of changing.
I love that one with the.
Where's my gavel thingy? Oh. Welcome to tonight's meeting. May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Some of you students, but all of you students are welcome to come down in the front. And I have at least one young lady that will get us started in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please come on down if you would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance right down in this area and the rest of us will stand.
Yep, and then you can face them and there's the flag in that corner.
I know we have more kids than this. Thank you for the brave ones that came. You can get started.
A diligence to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council Meeting for May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and place cards are prohibited in council chambers and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to the minutes. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mary. I move to approve the minutes of the April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting as presented.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Are there any changes or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations and to everybody that's here, no matter what your presentation you're getting tonight, to the families that are here, we are proud of each and every person that's here tonight and to the students and their artwork. I loved every piece and when they gave me only fifteen sheets to go and put my name on what I liked, I didn't think that was very fair because I loved every one of them. So thank you to everybody that's here tonight. Do we have any of our youth advisory panel here tonight? I did not see any. And if, shout out if you're my youth yapper. Well, I just wanna share, had they been here? We have a whole panel and for those of you that aren't into eighth grade yet, but if you're going to eighth grade or are anywhere between eighth and twelfth, we would love to have you apply for our youth advisory panel. They help us in the city. They get to learn a little bit about how the city works. They help behind the scenes on several events and we would love for you to go to our website and just fill out that application and you'll hear from us during the summer. But with that, then our next is recognition of students of the Westminster Public Schools for their artworks for the city's artistic traffic box wrap project.
Thank you. Can I have all of my students that have participated, that are here today, to join me up front in recognition of your artwork?
Yes. There you go.
Tell people to the back, shorter ones to the front.
My little, my height, folks. And then I'm gonna have you. I'm gonna have you split over here. There you go. So as you can see, we have a lot of students that have helped Westminster participate in a public art for our city. This is one of a kind for Westminster. You know, when I drove around other cities, they've had public artwork on their traffic wrap boxes. And I just want to thank from the bottom of my heart Kate Cook and our transportation department, that includes Heath Klein and Ricky Martinez. I don't see them, but they are to make this happen, to bring this to fruition. Public art creates a sense of community, a sense of pride, and it's placemaking. And we are so grateful to have this now in our community because of these students. So we had fifty-three students in Westminster Public Schools participate with us, designing fifteen different pieces of traffic wrapped boxes. Those will be installed, I'm gonna say in the fall, or maybe early. I'm getting a nod from maybe early. It takes a while to go into production design, ensuring that all the right pieces are there so that we can get it right when we place them. There's also some elements that need to be considered when placing them. But I just wanted to shout out to this group right here and thank you for all the you do. You know, this is lifetime for us. You'll have a piece of our hearts and our community just because of your design and what you've helped us create for Westminster. So I just wanna give these awesome students, please help me give them a round of applause. And with that, I'm gonna ask Manager Freitag if he can maybe give me the proclamation. And with that, we're gonna read a proclamation, just thanking these students for public arts. Whereas, public art enhances the city's built environment and community, or excuse me, built environment and brings our community together. And whereas, a partnership between the City of Westminster and Westminster Public Schools has resulted in the creation of artwork for display on city traffic boxes. And whereas, fifty-three young artists from grades one through twelve, representing five schools in our community, produce artworks for the project. And whereas, faculty and staff from Westminster Public Schools inspired and guided these students. And whereas, the mayor and city councilors wish to recognize the faculty, staff, and students of Westminster Public Schools. And now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim appreciation to the students, faculty, and staff of Westminster Public Schools for the artworks to be used for the city's artistic traffic box wraps project, signed this eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. And I just want to say that I'm on this side because really all the recognition goes to them. So, one more, yes, thank you. And then could I have someone from Westminster Public School staff come and accept your proclamation?
Let's introduce yourself, real quick.
Hi, I'm James Duffy, the chief operating officer for the district. And we have Ariel in the back. Ariel, why don't you come up also? For the district side, she was the driving force in this initiative. So come on up.
Thank you also for your hard work in this. And I am gonna give it to both of you. And we'll take pictures. I know. Thank you all.
And to the parents and students, if you haven't been here before, it is okay to slip out at this point if you don't wanna stay for more. We have several presentations tonight, so if you do need to get home, it's okay. We thank you for being here and we love your kids. Thank you.
Just so you know, the person that's supposed to accept this proclamation is named Court Paramon.
Court Paramon. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Counselor Baker, who will do a proclamation for World Fallen Dafa Day. Counselor Baker?
And now that we have allowed everyone to take their picture, I would like Mr. Pearlman to join me in the front, please. On our next item of agenda, or our next agenda item, is, well, the recognition of World Fulong Dafa Day. This year marks the thirty-first anniversary of the peaceful spiritual practice of Fulong Dafa and the twenty-fourth annual World Fulong Dafa Day celebration on May thirteenth. Millions of people worldwide celebrate the monumental anniversary of this really meditation practice rooted in ancient China. Fulong Dafa is a Buddhist school of really meditation practice for, well, the body and mind. It basically transcends cultural boundaries and really contributes to a really healthier, more harmonious, really, society as its, I mean, the philosophy is centered around universal principles of truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance. And since its really introduction, more than a hundred million people in over a hundred countries have benefited from it. Fulong Dafa practice religioners peacefully defend human rights and freedom. And today they are facing brutal persecution in really China. Quite profoundly outrageous persecution that we have even a hard time fantasizing how bad it is. We've, and Fulong Dafa Day is to raise public awareness in really resisting persecution through really peaceful means over the past two, really decades, and this persecution is still ongoing in China today. Fulong Dafa Day is recognized for its positive contributions to our, of the society. And this really of the proclamation supports the city's, I mean, the really strategic plan and goal of quality of life by really recognizing, I mean, the spiritual practice of World Fulong Dafa Day peacefully defending human rights and freedoms through a meditation practice. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Pearlman and he can tell us a little more.
Oh, I thank the City of Westminster for having us and for, I mean, that was very good. We're really happy to be the, the, China. It's a qigong and meditation practice and it's. On Dafa Day. Of course, all of Westminster is invited and will have practice like here in Westminster and people in Westminster who are interested in the practice. And, um, yeah, this is a wonderful, wonderful practice. If you ever get the chance to come out and see it, it's a beautiful thing. And it's been performed in China. So popular in China so quickly that the authoritarian regime just got frightened by the numbers and decided to start persecuting people for it. And even when they realized it was harmless, they, they, they just doubled it. They had the safe face and it's kind of a petty regime. That's, that's the heart of the authoritarian. Being here in the free United States of America and dealing with stuff like this makes us realize how lucky we are and to have a city like great as Westminster acknowledge us today. Like, we really appreciate you. Thank you for that introduction. All you guys are out here. Fulong Dafa practitioners out there, the sites are always friendly, so we'd love to see you out there. Yeah.
And so now let's make it official. Proclamation. Whereas, since its really public introduction in nineteen ninety-two by a Mr. Lee Hongzhu, Fulong Dafa has brought health and peace of mind to over one hundred million people around the world. And whereas, Fulong Dafa, also known as Fulong Gong, is an ancient practice of exercise, meditation, and study that of the promotes good of the spirits and mental health. And whereas, Fulong Dafa is based on the principles of Zen, Shang, Ren, which are really truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance, as will the virtues of, okay, the universe. And whereas, Fulong Dafa transcends cultural and racial boundaries and really contributes to, to, okay, the universal dream of a peaceful, tolerant, and more compassionate society. And whereas, Fulong Dafa is practiced all over Colorado by many individuals of all ages. Now, really, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the City of Westminster, and on really behalf of the entire city council and staff, do really hereby proclaim, May really thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. twenty twenty-two, to be Fulong Dafa Day. Signed, signed, signed this eighth day of May, twenty twenty-two.
Next up, we have Counselor Namella doing the twenty-year certificates for our employees and to other employees here. Please bring your families up, friends, whoever's here with you tonight. They are welcome, and it's just our way of saying thank you for loaning them out to us during the workday.
Okay, can Andy Jans, did I say your last name right? Do you have anyone you want to bring up?
I came by myself. I have a few people here, though.
Okay. Do you want to say hi to them, or? Okay, he just waved to his friends. Okay. Andy Jans was hired in two thousand and three as a golf worker at Heritage Golf Course at Westmore, which is now known as Walnut Creek Golf Preserve. Since then, Andy has worked a variety of jobs at, at both Westminster Golf Courses and has been in this position at Legacy Ridge since two thousand and fifteen. He has worked at both courses long enough to know them inside and out. Andy has been part of many major projects at both courses, like the rerouting of golf holes, major tournaments, and irrigation renovations. Andy has seen many people come and go and has learned a great deal from everyone he has crossed paths with. He has enjoyed being a part of the evolution of both the City of Westminster Golf Courses over the course of his twenty years. He enjoys the consistency of the many seasons of working on a golf course, yet likes seeing the changes from year to year. Andy is a lifelong Colorado resident and grew up in the Littleton area. He attended Colorado State University, you are truly a Coloradan, okay, where he earned his turf grass management degree. Andy loves all the typical Colorado activities when it comes to skiing, biking, hiking, and camping. Andy is passionate about music and loves to attend live shows and is learning to play the banjo. You should have brought that today.
You don't want that.
He is also a big sports fan and roots for all the Colorado teams and the Chicago Cubs. Another passion of Andy's is fitness. In two thousand and fourteen, Andy completed his two-hundred-hour yoga teacher training and teaches yoga in his spare time. He is a hundred hours away from completing his advanced yoga teacher training as well. Andy is grateful to live in such a beautiful state and work in such a supportive organization like the City of Westminster, and we're very lucky to have you. I don't know what's in there. What is in there?
A pin, a twenty-year pin.
Your twenty-year pin. Don't lose it. This is cooler, though. Here's your certificate. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach White and friend slash family.
All right. Zach White, another twenty years, was hired in two thousand and three as a dispatcher in the Police and Fire Communication Center. Zach was a police officer for three years and a report specialist for two years, but returned to the Communication Center where he is a dispatcher today. In two thousand and twelve, Zach was awarded Dispatcher of the Year for the state of Colorado. Impressive. He earned other various awards throughout the years for being involved in noteworthy incidents. Over the years, Zach has trained and continues to train new dispatch employees, a privilege he takes a lot of pride in. Zach has been an integral part of rebuilding the dispatch training program, coordinating a computerized on-call system, and reclassifying the dispatch job classification. The high level of professionalism he and his colleagues maintain earned the dispatch center a reputation of excellence among centers in the front range. Personally, Zach thinks it's the best. We do, too. We do, too. Zach and his wife, Nassim, have two daughters, Zoe, who is seven years old, and Ayla, who is five years old. These girls keep Zach and Nassim very busy with a lot of after-school activities. Nassim is a, is a urologist, so they spend time sharing a lot of funny stories. Zach is an avid cyclist and enjoys anything outdoors in warm weather, especially when it includes lake activities. Congratulations. What's your favorite?
Water skiing.
Wow. That's very cool.
I've been known to come and get you if you don't. Welcome and introduce us.
This is my wife, Jessica. This is my son, Connor. These are my daughters, Trinity and Gianna, and Connor's girlfriend, Tara.
Welcome, everyone. Andrew Flynn started with the Parks and Recs Division, with Parks Division in Parks, Recreation, and Libraries as a seasonal. In nineteen ninety-eight, he was hired on full-time as a Parks worker. As a Parks worker, he supervised the mo crews for five years in a very, in various districts around the city before moving over to forestry for three years. He then moved over to Westminster City Park to take care of the soccer fields where the professional soccer team, the Colorado Rapids, called home for many years. Andrew then moved to the ballfield side of Westminster City Park and took care of Christopher Fields until he was promoted to crew leader in two thousand and eighteen. In all, Andrew has been working at the Westminster City Park area for a total of sixteen years. During his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and friends. Andrew is married and has three talented children, twin daughters, who are twenty-two, and a son who is nineteen. He enjoys taking vacations, going to the mountains, traveling to Kansas to watch his son play baseball for Tabor College. And do they have a good record?
They do.
Oh, good. All right, we have a pin for you.
Thank you.
We have the check for you, and we have the certificate for you. We have Chris Hempleman, who is not able to be here, but he was hired by the Westminster Police Department in nineteen ninety-eight. He is currently assigned to the Patrol Division. He has served in the Specialized Crime Attack Team, now known as Specialized Enforcement Team, Traffic and Patrol. He has proudly served as a team, as a field training instructor for over eighteen years, and served for several years on the Peer Support Team. Chris is the recipient of two Meritorious Service Medals and two Medals of Valor. He was the Westminster Police Officer of the Year in two thousand and eight. The Colorado Auto Theft Investigation, C A T I, Officer of the Year in two thousand and twelve, has received thirteen letters of commendation and has received one of chief's commendations. Over the years, Chris has received several Teams in Action Awards and is most proud of the Teams in Action Award for being an integral part of the investigation, quick location, and apprehension of the driver who struck and killed an eighteen-year-old child. This child was riding with his brother in their go-kart in two thousand and seven when he was killed. The driver fled the scene with his truck prior to Westminster Police Officers' arrival on the scene. Chris has participated in several St. Baldrick's events over the years by shaving his head and raising money for childhood cancer awareness and childhood cancer research. Chris is proudly married to his wife, Jody, for nearly twenty-five years, and is the proud father of four amazing young men. Let's hear it for Chris. Welcome.
Thank you.
You can introduce us to everybody.
So this is my daughter Lauren, my son, our son Alex, and my husband Matthew.
Welcome, everyone, and thanks for coming down with her.
Thank you.
Rhoda began her career at the Police Department as a police records specialist in nineteen ninety-eight. She was promoted to Lead Police Records Technician in two thousand and five. In two thousand and nine, she was promoted again to Record Supervisor. Her most recent promotion was October two thousand seventeen to the position of Support Services Administrator. Rhoda supervises police records and property and evidence. Rhoda has received her Master Certification from Colorado Certified Records Network and is the C C I C Coordinator. She was an active member of the Peer Support Team from its inception in two thousand. In twenty twenty-two, she resigned from her position as Co-Coordinator. During Rhoda's career, she received the following Team Action Awards: Investigation of Fatal Go-Kart Accident, Integra Project Team, Code Enforcement Automation Process Team, and Peer Support Program. She has also received the following C M O Choice Awards: Police Department's Peer Support Team, Records Section Laser Fish Project, and Peer Support Program. In two thousand and sixteen, Rhoda received the City Spirit Award by demonstrating her excellence in her daily activities in all categories as defined by spirit. Are your walls at home or at work falling off with all these recognitions? Rhoda and Matthew have been married for twenty-seven years and have two children, Lauren, who is twenty-one, and is a junior at University of Northern Colorado, start studying nursing. And Alex is nineteen, working part-time at the State Capitol as a Capitol Guide and continuing his education and transition program for children with special needs. Rhoda enjoys canning jam. Ooh, what's your favorite?
Raspberry.
Ooh, that sounds good. And planting and tending to flowers in her yard. Rhoda and her family are big Disney fans and enjoy planning trips to either Disney World or Disneyland once a year. I want to be in one of your bags going there. Sounds great. Okay, you get this, that's your pin. You get this, that's the money. And here is your certificate. You've got a lot of twenty-fives. Oh, Nikki Leo, where's your support team? And no dog tonight? What's the deal? Dog. He's family. No, that's not fair.
I know. He does not get the money. No.
Would you like to introduce us?
Oh, sure. This is Will, my husband. He also works for the city in the Parks Department, and he's been here for twenty-nine years, so he's been here and done this. Yeah.
Did you get his check?
Oh.
Nikki Leo has worked for the City of Westminster as Wellness Coordinator for the past twenty-five years, and she does a marvelous job, and she's very kind when I bring Peanut Bitter She holds a very visible and key position coordinating the city's wellness program for all benefited employees. Nikki has a passion for wellness and has been complimented by many for her kind, helpful, and knowledgeable approach. Several years ago, Nikki obtained her Ph.D. in Health Management and Education, which is a huge accomplishment and further demonstrates her commitment to wellness. Nikki has been recognized by several Teams in Action Award for her customer service as she embodies and values the organization in her work. On a personal note, Nikki is married to Will, who works in the Parks Division of the Parks and Recreation and Libraries Department. Nikki and Will have a sixteen-year-old son, Dominic, who attends Legacy High School. A dog and cat round out the Leo household. And she has completed seventeen full Ironman triathlons. That deserves a hand. Which includes the World Championships in Kona, Hawaii, St. George, Utah. Later this summer, she will be competing in the World Championships in Finland. She also enjoys spending time with her family, hiking, trail running, and reading. She is an extraordinary lady. And as I said, he gets this check. You get your pin, and you get this. Tina Takahashi. Get down here. It would be very hard for you to, if I came and got you. You can stand over here. Okay, would you like to introduce us to everybody?
Absolutely. This is my niece, Morgan, my great, emphasis on great, niece, Kinsley. This is my mom, Rosie, my sister, Jessica, her husband, Mike, my husband, Father, or Dad of the Year, Husband of the Year, twenty twenty-three, his mom, Edie, and my favorite chief, Chief Hose.
Tina was hired as a firefighter in nineteen ninety-eight, promoted to paratican in two thousand, and is currently a Lieutenant EMS Fields Coordinator. This position has many facets and emphasizes community outreach efforts, allowing Tina the opportunity to express her passion as a public servant by helping others. Tina provides CPR and A E D first aid training to city employees and citizens and coordinates ongoing efforts with city staff to maintain skills and practice with mock scenarios. Tina also works with the senior community and facilities of Westminster in a myriad of topics and training. Tina has offered, or has served as a trustee for Women in Fire and has also served as Chair of the Colorado State Fire Chiefs Subcommittee Women of Colorado. Tina continues to support, advocate, and advance women and D E I initiatives. Tina is married to her best friend, enjoys time with family and friends. She enjoys crafting, cooking, traveling, loves glamping, hiking, biking, learning four-wheeling, time with the dogs, and time at the beach. Actually, lots of time at the beach is preferred. I understand that. Okay, money goes to you. Pin goes there. There you go. Mayor Pro Tim.
Could I have Dee Martin, please, join me up front? Yep. So I have to say, this is one of my favorite things to do because if it wasn't for all these fine folks, the city would have nothing done for the people who live here. And so Dee is somebody who's taken care of all of our people for many, many years. So I'd like you to introduce.
This is Joe, my husband. He's from An Alabama Boy.
All right, well, thank you for lending her to us. So Dee Martin was hired in nineteen ninety-three as a recreational specialist for Parks, Recreation, and Libraries to run the city's special events. Within a few years, she transferred to the youth teen programs and helped start the after-school program in, in seven middle schools within our different, three different school districts. Dee was promoted to Human Resource Analyst in General Service Department in nineteen ninety-eight and has held many positions since that time. Of note, in June twenty seventeen, Dee was promoted to the Human Resource Director with newly created Human Resource Department and helped form a new department with the support of many talented human resource professionals. Dee continues to follow her dreams and passions and is now the Executive Talent Developer, serving the role of helping with recruiting efforts as well as supporting organizational team and employment development. team and employment development efforts. One of Dee's proudest accomplishments at the city has been to assist the organization in hiring, supporting, and developing many talented new employees as they provide service to our community. Before working at the city, Dee graduated from Arizona State University. She traveled around the world as a student and manager with Up the People International for seven years. A few highlights in her career include first grade and eighth grade history civics, tailhooking onto a, oh wow, tailhooking onto an aircraft carrier. That's pretty neat. I wouldn't have even guessed that about you. The USS Lexington, working for World Youth Day, the 1993 Papal Visit in Denver, being the special event coordinator in 1993, the July 4th celebration in Washington, DC, and working at the White House for six months, helping to set up Take Pride in America Celebration at the Rose Garden for President Reagan. Dee and Joe have been married for 26 years and have a 23-year-old daughter, Michaela, who attends University of San Diego, earning her Juris Doctorate and Master's in Peace and Justice. The family has a strong faith and desire to serve others and love traveling and adventure. Dee is proud member of the Westminster Rotary Club. So thank you for your 30 years. I can attest, I have to say that you obviously do a good job from all the great people that we see. So you get a plaque and a pin. They don't trust me with money, I'm sorry. And then Jean Ward in your family, if you would join me up front. Do you want to go ahead and introduce your crew?
My crew tonight is my husband of 38 years, Michael, my two teammates, Eric and Jeremy in our small but mighty Automation Services Department, and the library services manager, Amy Rhonda.
Welcome. I'm gonna go ahead and give you this and that, and hopefully I'll be a little more succinct with reading here.
Mine's much shorter.
Jean Ward joined the library as a volunteer in 1990 at King's Mill Library. In 1993, she was hired as a part-time shelver. Over the years, her work at the library has expanded. She has worked in many roles at King Mills Library, 76th Avenue Library, College Hill Library, including circulation clerk, interlibrary loan clerk, cataloger, public relations specialist, readers advisor, library associate, and library specialist. In 2006, she joined the library's automation services team and now works full-time as an application specialist managing the library website, online catalog, library kiosks, meeting rooms, and other public-facing services. She also provides training to all the new library staff as well as a refresher sessions for current coworkers. Libraries have evolved greatly over the last 30 years, and she enjoys the ongoing challenge of adding and improving and promoting access to library services for all members in the community. In her free time, Jean and her husband, Michael, love to travel. They will be crossing off a bucket list item in December when they visit South America and Antarctica. Wow, that's awesome. Well, thank you very much for your service.
Next is our proclamation for Economic Development Week. Councilor Nermella.
All right, economic development. These are some of the busiest people in the city, so I'm not surprised they're maybe still All right, economic development, you guys are keeping our city vibrant and alive and bringing more jobs, bringing housing, bringing all those supportive services to our businesses. So I'm going to pass this over to Director Kimball, and maybe you could introduce everybody.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you so much, Councilor Nermella. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and all of the councilors here tonight. Thank you so much. I'm Lindsay Kimball, your Economic Development Director. On behalf of the entire economic development team, I'm scooching down so we can all fit here. This is not our entire team, but it is a great, great portion of the team tonight. We have John Burke. You will know him also as Mr. Downtown. He is our economic vibrancy manager. I also have Shelby Wood, who's our business analyst and helps a lot with our small business. We have Stephanie Adi, who also focuses on small business, but with a really strong focus on our retailers and making sure that's a healthy sector. Next, we have Stephanie Trawler. She is our business resilience manager and focuses on business recruitment, retention, and expansion in small business and many other sort of things. Next, we have Heather Kronenberg. She is our real estate and redevelopment administrator, does an amazing job working on our redevelopment toolkit now. We have John Van, who I recently stole from PRL, thank you, Tomas, and he is an amazing addition to the team. He is helping us with some of those amazing park projects that we have going on in downtown and some of our other capital projects throughout the city. And Molly Tayer, who helps us with our balanced housing approach, our CDBG programs, our grant programs to help folks stay in their homes, and recently launched that amazing housing lift program, which is helping to maintain our supply of affordable housing. And finally, we have Bonnie Lullenberger, and she is our CDBG expert there, who helps us stay out of trouble with HUD and keeps us on the straight and narrow there and helps folks be able to take advantage of that program. I just want to say that everyone here today, as you've heard, brings a specific skillset: business development, real estate, neighborhood development, redevelopment, placemaking, marketing, all sorts of skillsets that you see here. And we are honored and on behalf of the regional, state, and national economic development partners, we are honored to accept this proclamation today. And while we're a small team, we think we make a great difference in the community. You'll always hear me say that economic development is a team sport. We want to thank all of our sister departments throughout the city that we work with on a daily basis. We couldn't do any of this great work without you. We believe in leveraging all of our strong relationships in the city, externally to the city, and we're very grateful to everyone who helps us be successful on a daily basis. I think we have the best job in the world because in the simplest terms, when people ask, what do you, what do you do? What is economic development? We, we support businesses that create jobs, which means in the simplest terms, we connect people with prosperity. We believe that that quality job provides opportunity, dignity, and self-reliance. That job then builds up people and families and make our community stable, safe, and vibrant. Our efforts to improve the physical environment, whether it is in downtown Westminster Station, historic Westminster, or anywhere in the community, it's to continue that cycle of private sector investment to diversify our economy, build resilience, and strengthen our tax base. So thank you, everyone, for supporting our efforts, and we'll continue to work hard for you and the entire community. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you all for all the hard work that you do on a daily basis to keep the city vibrant. And all right, so I'm gonna jump into the proclamation. Whereas, the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. In 2016, the International Economic Development Council created Economic Development Week to encourage awareness for local programs that create jobs, advance career development opportunities, and improve the quality of life in communities everywhere. And whereas, economic developers promote economic prosperity and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. Economic developers attract and retain private capital investment, cultivate vibrant communities, and support expanding career opportunities. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, economic developers are connectors, collaborators, negotiators, facilitators, advocates, visionaries, influencers, creators, leaders, and most importantly, doers. And whereas, economic developers work in the City of Westminster, Colorado. The City of Westminster's economic development professionals are dedicated every day to creating a city of beautiful, safe, well-maintained neighborhoods and destinations with a vibrant, diverse economy, rich and resilient environment, and a strong sense of community and belonging. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8 through May 12, 2023, as Economic Development Week. Congratulations.
Next, Councilor Azadi will do proclamation for National Public Works Week.
Thank you. So, can you hear me? Okay. The week of the 21st is National Public Works Week, but tonight, we get to honor the silent heroes of our city who help keep us safe, keep our roads safe, keep our water clean, and so many other things. You work every day to make our daily lives better and our city stronger. So maybe some introductions first?
Absolutely. Well, I'm excited to be here. It's an honor to be accepting this after economic development because we work so closely together. But I really want to introduce these folks because they're the ones that get it done every day, make sure our water and wastewater is taken care of, and our streets are maintained and protecting public health and safety. And if any of our youth leaders are here, I don't know if I see anymore, but I just wanted to give a shameless plug as well that there are so many great career opportunities, whether you want to go the college path or if you want to pursue a career out of high school, there's a lot of great opportunities. So just really quickly, I wanted to let everyone introduce themselves and just say what your job title is.
Sure, I'm Andrea Song, Utilities Operations Manager, and we have a lot of hidden heroes on our team that come to work with their heart and soul and give it their all. So it's, I'm representing them.
Stephanie Blyker, Capital Projects Administrator.
Leslie Manning, Utility Engineering Manager.
Jeanette Wolf, Water Resources Technician.
Ryan Decker, Senior Engineer.
Tom Scrivner, Drinking Water Treatment Plant Superintendent.
Bob Kutchin, Maintenance Supervisor at the Big Dry Creek Plant.
And I'm Brock Huffer, the interim street operations manager.
Thank you all so much for the work that you do. Let's get into this eighth or 100th proclamation of the night, but the most special one in my heart. Okay, so.
I'm biased, I think.
Whereas, public works and utility services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' lives. And whereas, support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works and utilities and programs concerning the maintenance of water, sewer, streets, highways, public buildings, and snow removal operations. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public works and utilities employees. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the public works and utilities department, that's all of you, are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And now, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Westminster, and call upon the people of Westminster to acquaint themselves with the challenges and opportunities involved in providing our public works and utilities, and to recognize the contributions that public works and utilities employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed, this 8th day of May, 2023.
The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council on any topic they choose unless there's a topic for which a public hearing is scheduled, and this evening, we have no public hearings. This evening, the clerk has informed us that we have received two emails by the deadline, and they were posted with the online agenda packet forward directly to the city council, and three voicemails, which will be played back after our live speakers. And how many do we have signed up?
We have one person signed up to speak live. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. It's good to be back in front of you. Hope you and your families are doing well. Incredible city. Congratulations to all who were honored here tonight. I'm here to pray for this meeting and for the City of Westminster. First, though, in March, our banking system started shaking, and the response from the government was deceptive. Since the first failures, depositors have been removing dollars from the banking system or moving money from smaller banks to larger banks. In March, First Republic Bank lost $100 billion in deposit. Last week, they failed. The shaking continues. The response again was deceptive, telling us the banking system is safe and sound. It's not. We never fully recovered from 2007, and that can was just kicked down the road. The road can't go on forever. Although we are told the FDIC will insure depositors up to $250,000, that insurance money is not there. In 1971, the dollar was taken off the gold standard. Standard in '73, the dollar became the petrodollar, and our government adopted unsustainable fiscal and monetary policies. Recently, nations have started revolting against the petrodollar, resulting in oil being bought and sold in other currencies. Our financial system is not sound, and the petrodollar is not safe. Let us invite God here to be with us. Heavenly Father, you are the living God. We invite you here to preside over this gathering and to be present in our community. Our community is not perfect, but we try. You've placed people here to lead us and make decisions. I lift them up to you and ask that you give them wisdom and understanding of Solomon. In 1 Kings 4:29-30, it states, "And God gave Solomon wisdom and understanding beyond measure, and breadth of mind like the sand on the seashore, so that Solomon's wisdom surpassed the wisdom of all the people of the east and all the wisdom of Egypt." So touch our leaders with wisdom and understanding. And Father, we all want the best community. Our government can impact our community, but our government is not our community. The community is we, the people. We determine the type of community we live in. We determine our community. Our community is every member. And sometimes, it's difficult to find commonality. What we need is your perfect love. In 1 Corinthians 13:4-8, you tell us what perfect love is. You state that love is patient and kind, love does not envy or boast, it is not arrogant or rude, it does not insist on its own way, it is not irritable or resentful, it does not rejoice in wrongdoing, but rejoices with the truth. Love bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never ends. Give us your love and make our community the best community. In your precious and holy name, I pray. Amen. And finally, in Ephesians 6:12, "For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against the principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places." Thank you very much. You guys have a nice night.
Thank you.
Mayor, my apologies, we did have one other person who wanted to speak.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Got a list here. First, I'd like to start off with last Friday's Cinco de Mayo celebration. I think Kit Redman did one hell of a job in putting that together. Special thanks to Kendra and the folks at Los Arcos. Nice spread of food. So be sure that's passed on. Next, I would like to personally thank Sergeant Impleman and Officer Adams, and I didn't catch the other officer, but they were down doing a cleanup on the Bradburn homeless encampment last week. Just glad to see that finally take place. So, good job, Chief. Next, in lieu of what happened at the Gaylord Hotel over the weekend, I do hope that the city is taking measures in having all of the HVAC ducts checked and inspected, not only at the pools, but the libraries and any place that we have exposed ductwork, like they had out there at the Gaylord Hotel. So if we could look into that, I'm sure everybody'd appreciate it. Next, while cruising next door over the weekend, there was a post regarding some property over at 92nd Pierce, and there was some confusion. And Rich, you chimed in as a counselor. Unfortunately, the information you chimed in with was not helpful, was kind of made the situation worse. I guess moving forward, if we could be sure what we're speaking about before we post, or defer that to somebody within the city so that the citizens know what's going on. And that's regarding the property over at 92nd Pierce. There's confusion about townhomes there versus the building that are cut on fire that is now open space. Okay, Rich? Next, let's talk about the rodeo market. I know it's a historic building. It's been a big piece of my life ever since I moved, or ever since I've lived in Westminster. But the idea of spending $2 million, or excuse me, yeah, $2 million plus to re-vanigate that building on the hopes, on the hopes that you can get a restaurant to move in there. The city will never recoup the money that they're putting in that building. I think you should really reevaluate how we're spending our money. Our money, I mean the taxpayers, the citizens. It's not your money. $2 million is way too much to spend on that building, especially since it's got a valuation of zero. At least, that's what staff reported to you the other night. Zero, and we're gonna put $2 million plus into it. Not a good investment of our money. That money could be better spent on, say, oh, a homeless, a homeless building, some tiny homes, something to help the people in this community that really need it. Short-term rentals, I know we're gonna talk about that tonight, or you're gonna talk about that tonight. I do hope that you really look over that, look over all of the ramifications of that, and not just give it a rubber stamp. There are things that are not really disclosed in there. Occupancy, for one. Who's gonna maintain and police these short-term rental facilities? Parking problems, problems with trash, et cetera, et cetera. If we're gonna do this, there needs to be accessibility to someplace or someone in the city where people can call if there's, if there's a problem. And if it's the police department, so be it, but there needs to be records kept so that moving forward, people that have multiple violations, the city can look into and take care of appropriately. Next, I'd like to talk about some comments that were made, some public comments, the ones that were written in, specifically Karen Clavety's. Again, home run, home run. I hope you all read that, read that, take an opportunity to absorb it, because again, she's another citizen that pretty much hit it out of the park with her comments. And if you're not familiar with those, I can bring them forward. Next, let's talk about an article in the Westminster window on April 27th titled, "Harsh Words From Counsel To Colleagues." I think statements made there were hypocritical, and I think Karen Clavety used that same word in her statement. I would have thought that you people would have, Dave, Nancy, Rich, I would have thought you have taken the high road. Nancy, are you paying attention?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't tell. I certainly hope you would have taken the high road there and said, "No comment," or "That's an internal situation we're dealing with," instead of airing it out in public. I mean, if you'd like, I can read the comments that Nancy made, which were most inappropriate as the mayor representing the city. And that all boils back to the council code of conduct and protocols that I brought forward last time, house rules. And again, I could go through those and read every one of them, but I don't think everybody on this council adheres to those. And I'm not just saying, Bruce. I'm saying, what are you smiling at, Dave? Does the truth hurt?
I think your time's up, sir.
I don't know. We don't have a light here. Again, you need to follow the protocols, all of you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker I had signed up.
Okay. Then do we have voicemails?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tina Wink. I'm a resident of Westminster, and I'm submitting a public comment in regards to the number of fireworks that are often lit off by residents of Westminster and nearby Adams County within Westminster, expressing concern around the impact to veterans, pets, and the safety of our homes in light of the Marshall Fire, and how dry the area we live in. And I'm asking for the city to more proactively work with the police departments in Westminster and Adams County to try to improve the number of and frequency of fireworks. Certainly, don't oppose celebrating on things like July 4th and New Year's Eve, but last year, there were at least 15 or 20 times that I reached out to the police department and nothing was ever done about it because I was told I needed to provide video or photographic evidence of the exact place that was happening, which, because of how infrequent they are, like 2 o'clock on a Tuesday, for example, or 3 a.m., it's a little difficult to get that, and I don't think it's a very safe recommendation for residents either, given the level of crime in today's environment. So, really would like to see the city help protect the residents and the structures we live in and frequent for shopping and things like that by decreasing the number of fireworks, especially over the summer months. Last year, this got really aggressive, starting Memorial Day, all the way past July 4th by a couple of weeks, almost every day that they were happening. So would love to have the city discuss that and come up with a plan to mitigate that for this year. Thank you.
Hello, this is Richard Jaika. I'm a Westminster homeowner and resident, and I am against the city going forward with this outrageously expensive water treatment plant, their climate control, and there are other left-costy alternatives. Please reconsider this and save us some yet more government overspending.
My name's Julia Shell, and I feel at this time, it's too much expense for most people just right after the COVID shutdown. People are still not all the way back on their feet for the increase in water prices due to a $190 million water construction project. The water rates are already too high for a lot of people. I know in my neighborhood, a lot of people are letting their lawns go completely back to dirt and weeds. And shortly, I will probably be one of those people if the rates keep going up. I do not think this is a good time for that. A lot of people are still living with job problems due to the COVID shutdown. Maybe in two to five years, might be better off, but at this point in time, I do not think it's something that we should be doing. Thanks.
That was the last voicemail.
Thank you. That brings us to City Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen, those in attendance and those that may be watching online. One thing I did want to point out that is just a great fact about our traffic box wraps is that there were 365 pieces of art that were actually submitted, and of those 365, there were only 15 that made that final cut. And so, pretty impressive for the final 15 recognized pieces. So just wanted to share that with the council and the community. So, next slide, please. So for anybody who may be interested, applications for the city's third annual Civic Academy are open through May 31st. You can go to our city website slash Civic Academy and apply. It's a 10-week program. It runs from June 14th to August 16th, provides community members a chance to look under the hood, if you will, of municipal government and city operations, and learn how we serve the community. And so encourage folks to take advantage of that opportunity. Next topic, Sheridan Boulevard Underpass Project update. We expect it to be finished up here in June of 2023. I saw a date of 10 June as a potential final day. I hate to commit to that, so I'll just say about June, and we'll call it, call it even with about June. But if you want to learn more about that project, and it's a long one that's been in progress, you can go to our city website at Sheridan Underpass to learn more. Next topic there, 72nd Corridor Study. It's a community outreach process for that avenue project, and so it's a multimodal transportation study for West 72nd Avenue from Pier Street to Zunai Street. It's underway. Effort will include two stakeholder groups, a community advisory group and a business and property owner group. And so, you know, we're interested in seeking input to enhance safety, placemaking, connectivity and access, and the corridor's character. So more to go there, but looking forward to that public input process. Next slide. Some Westie wins. Great picture there of the mayor and the Mexican Consul General here in Denver. So on Friday, as mentioned, May 5th, the city celebrated Cinco de Mayo, and the mayor hosted a visit by Mexican Consul General Pavel Melendez Cruz and other Mexican officials. During the meeting, city leadership, the Consul General and his team discussed ways that the city and the consulate could work together to serve the Mexican community here in Westminster. It was a very, very nice event, initial meetings here in the boardroom, and then a reception outside, and frankly, the weather was absolutely perfect. So a great, great event. The other thing I'd like to highlight is, is the Government Finance Officers Association Award. So for the 39th year, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Westminster. And this certificate, it's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And the city will actually receive that award in person on Tuesday, August 15th. But that's a big deal, and we're very, very proud to have achieved that for the 39th year over our, over our time as a city operation. Next slide. Some things to know, Inclusivity Board meets Wednesday, May 10th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., right here at City Hall in the CMO Conference Room. I understand that that's a hybrid meeting. Could I get a nod on, is that a hybrid meeting? So there is a hybrid option. And then Neighborhood Nights, Friday, May 12th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., out at College Hill Library. City Council Study Session next Monday night, May 15th, 6:30, right here, City Hall, Council Chambers. And then, a little bit further out, but something important for the community to know about, and I hope participate in, and that is the City Council Town Hall. It's Thursday evening, May 18th, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and that's at Orchard Park Academy, and the address is listed there. Next slide. We have included an information-only quarterly workforce report for the council's information. And next slide. And as always, the city staff wants to make sure that we're accessible, responsive, transparent, and certainly accountable. If you have a question, an issue, a concern, an idea, please reach out, contact me. My number is listed there, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfritag@cityofwestminster.us. And I encourage you to follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Nextdoor. Any questions, that's all I have this evening.
I just wanted to share, you were on Westminster Live today, the chamber, and you did a great job and explained everything you've been doing since you got here, and so thanks for doing that.
Absolutely. You're welcome, Mayor.
I see no one else. That brings us to council comments. Council Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't want to disappoint. Our meetings of late have become more similar to a contest or combat rather than to conversation. So I'd like to ask again that we make these conversations. I think we're all really committed to the success of this city, but if we don't share the reasons why we take positions that we think will benefit our city in the long run, it becomes an emotionally charged combat rather than a conversation. We are making decisions that go decades into the future, and some, okay, decisions can easily be, easily be really reversed, like I was quite pleased with our comprehensive plan. But that could be reversed, literally, in less than a year. Everything done on that, gone. But if we take on huge amounts of debt, that can never be reversed. That has to be paid. In one of our conversations, one of our members talked about the crushing of student loans, an absolutely accurate observation. And it has profoundly affected not only the students involved, but our society as a whole. And that is the danger of debt. So I appeal to my colleagues for conversation, and I would also like to say that, in my opinion, the people of this city are just as important in those, in those conversations. And for us to dismiss their input, for us to shade their comments as being poorly informed is a disservice to everyone. So let's not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Seymour?
I was gonna give an update on this, on this last week, it's a busy week, but since we had so many things going on, I just wanted to highlight one item. I had the opportunity Thursday, sorry, what day was that? Wednesday. Wednesday evening, the city has a great program that it's developed, that it is an internship through Westminster Public Schools, Adams 12, and Jefferson County Public Schools, and it was a very special graduation on Wednesday night at the Walnut Creek Golf Preserve for three of those high school students. So I wanted to recognize publicly Hannah Robinson, Roger Benson, both from Adams 12 Future Forward Career Technical Education, and Leslie Garey from Westminster High School. And so it was great meeting these three who had quite an adventure and training and immersion over 13 weeks. And special thanks to just a few of the people involved in that program. Heather Hines is the intern program coordinator from the city. And to the two mentors that dealt with these three people, there's, there's many, depending on the internship, that many, many applied and only few got selected. And so, special thanks to, and it's appropriate for tonight, for Fire Lieutenant Tina Takahashi, for the two that worked with the fire service, and to IT Services Administrator Larry Garlic for being excellent mentors to these young people. You could really tell in their introduction of them that the 13 weeks was very special. And then, in most cases, I think someone from our human service or, or Human Services Department is going to be standing outside the line after graduation, trying to seek down these excellent young people to see what we can do with them going into the future. So thank you to staff. Thank you to the two districts that participated this time, and then Jeff Co. generally comes on in summer and fall for that part of the internship. So my, it's my only comments for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I too had a pretty busy week, and there was one specific thing I wanted to bring up to the group, and hopefully get this on staff's radar because there's a to-do for us. So Thursday, they had the RMMA Roundtable. They did have a consultant there who shared some results of their work in, I believe it was the Oakland Airport. it was the Oakland Airport. And they, looking at, you know, some of the work that was done prior, were, felt pretty confident that there could be some meaningful changes in flight path in order to address some of the noise situation with the airport. Obviously, I know that the other piece of that is lead, but that's not the charge of the roundtable. And I know council has tried to go different paths with that so we get the right people for the right thing. But with this, the big takeaway was that each municipality or government entity, because there's also the counties that are involved, need to have some recommendations at some point back to the roundtable, basically to say what's, where are your pain points and what's on limits and off limits? Meaning, you know, where are you getting a lot of the complaints from the flyovers? And then additionally, I guess, prior to now, there was a kind of a hard line from somebody on the roundtable that open space was off limits. There are a couple of us who think that that seems like a favorable option to have some of those training flights go over our open space, because it would, you know, not be over people's homes, and that's where we're getting most of the complaints from. So I don't know the right way to go about it. I know in past, we had a staff member who would listen to those meetings, so I was hoping somebody had, and really looking to staff to kind of help us figure out what the right way for us to give the right feedback is. Because one of the things that I really pushed for is making sure that we're going off of real data points, you know, so we're not necessarily making decisions based off of, you know, upset people. Not that we shouldn't account for their voices, but I want to be, I want to follow data. And I think that makes the best sense for us. So to me, it seems like a meaningful move, and I think that it sounded, again, the, they also went over the Part 150 and potentially going down that path. The consultant really felt that there was some meaningful things that we could do without the Part 150. He said that we could still do Part 150, but then there's a lot of money that, I think they said it costs $2 million, where the FAA will pay 90% of that, and then the body would have to come up with the other 10% of that $2 million. So I wanted to bring that back and make sure that I get it on staff's radar so that we could get, you know, some feedback from them as far as, you know, what a good path forward was. But, you know, good move forward. I did want to take the time, though, to also bring up the lead conversation, because we have asked in the past about who the right people to discuss that is. And we've had an ask from the community to bring in a certain person that they feel is an expert in that realm. I'm hesitant to want to bring in, you know, somebody who potentially could have bias. I'm not saying they're not an expert. I don't know them. But I do think, at this point, there's enough concern being driven out of that conversation from the roundtable around lead that it would make sense for us to not only make sure we're talking to whoever the partner is that actually could do something about lead, but potentially maybe educating the council and the community a little bit better about that subject matter. So that would be my ask on that portion, so that we're continuing to move the ball as far as the airport. Quickly, the other couple of things that I attended this week, I was with the folks from Mexico. That was a really great event for Cinco de Mayo, and it was really cool to hear the program that they're giving for the folks from Mexico that now live here. Very cool bridge back to their families in Mexico. And then I also dropped by Station 5's Open House, which was packed as always. And then I and the mayor and city manager were all at National Day of Prayer and City of Westminster at the Crossing Church, which was a great event for folks in the faith community, so.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to second Mayor Protem's ask on having some kind of study session, maybe, but if staff can get back to us on the best path forward on getting lead education for us, because I'm hearing a lot of things, yes, from residents, but also, you know, Congresswoman Patterson is concerned, she's looking into this. Nagus is concerned, he's looking into this. It's just something that we should at least be educated on. What is the actual state of lead in that area? Because there's kids involved in schools and homes. So I'm just very concerned, and I would like to be educated.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I'd also like to have, if we could, just have a brief follow-up on the resident who asked about us looking into fireworks between Memorial Day and July 4th. I believe that came up last year as well as a public comment. So just want to better understand the proactive steps that we are taking towards that. And then Counselor Baker, I, I'm going to maybe break protocol here because I may not focus on the issue, but just speak to you directly because you've been looking for a conversation. And so I'd really like to really dive into what would, what would it take for you to have a conversation? Because, and what does that look like? And I'm being genuine in my ask, because for the last several weeks, you've been asking for a conversation, and it's perplexing to me because all the conversations that we've had have been in study session, have been on the dais. And so my question to you is, what conversation are you looking for? Because it seems to me, and it's very disheartening, when someone goes off, talks and holds a flame to code of contact, code of conduct and our protocols that we set as a council, and yet you don't follow them. There are items on there that aren't followed. And so that's a little, a little disheartening for me to listen to saying, I want this, I want this, I want a conversation. And so where has the conversation not been? Because we've all had the same information, and where it becomes disheartening is where we've said a majority moves things forward. And that doesn't mean going off, going off and saying that we aren't factual, that we're not looking at all of the data. I appreciate that you dive into the data and you, and you look at every thorough detail, but you're insulting us, specifically me, that also dives into a lot of detail and tries to understand to a T, to make sure that I'm making the best decision for our residents with resident input, with staff input, with professional input. So it's, it feels insulting to me and my decisions that I'm trying to base on the information that we have, that it's constantly, it feels that there's a constant undermining of the research and the dedication that I put in to the work I am doing as a counselor. So please tell me, please work with me here on understanding what conversation you would like to have. That's, that's my question to you.
Counselor Nermella?
Not on that topic, but I just wanted to further underline the question about lead that we all seem to share, so just to support getting more information on that, as well as the fireworks question. I also agree with the community member who called in, who said that, you know, I was also told when I called the police years ago that I had to get a video or that they had to catch people. So I know it's tough. So whatever we can do to be proactive, that I'd love to hear. And then just real quick, this week, the Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments Work Session was really just focused on Senate Bill 213 and talking a little bit more about that. And now I have completely lost track on where it, I don't know. It died. Okay, well then, that was what we talked about. That's all. Thanks.
For me, Station 5, everybody that works on that chief hose, always a great turnout. What I love about that one, the community that's around their walks there, they know at 1 o'clock the Flight for Life is coming. Over and over, while we were serving the hot dogs and hamburgers and cheeseburgers, people just said, please thank the firefighters for doing this. So please, heartwarming thanks from all of that community. They, they feel like a community because of that one thing you do. And with that turnout, you should feel very proud because it's all ages, grandparents, anybody and everybody was welcome. And I know a few seniors came just to interact with somebody else because they live alone. And they sat at a table and just talked to people. So you hit on so many levels for community. It was just fantastic and great weather. It was wonderful. We had cuisine with cops last week. They were at a soccer field, so as soccer teams were coming off, they had the Kona Ice truck there. They would get their drinks, and then we had the, I call it the Batmobile, I don't know its real name, but we have a great picture of a girls' soccer team all in there with their Kona ice, ice cups and had a great time. All ages, got to meet a few little pups walking around. As the kids are playing, some parents walk the track, and nobody knows exactly how far that is. We just knew about how, how long it took because they'd come by for their second round of going. AdCog Dinner, city manager and I went to that, met with all the other cities in Adams County, and they gave us a, Adams County gave us a presentation on what they're doing with their ARPA funds. And the Cinco de Mayo Friday with the Consular of Mexico and his folks was just a beautiful day. Everybody that had a part from staff in putting that together. I don't know if I saw Kit tonight, but, oh, there you are. Great job. I've had a ton of feedback from just citizens that were there, that were able to talk to these folks. And, and there is a special program. Just call the consulate if you know, I called immediately some friends I know that have neighbors that have family down in Mexico, and I said, there's a special thing. You can get a Visa card that goes down there. You get a MasterCard up here, and that, it's able to transfer money, and you don't have to pay the exorbitant fees for all that. And they were just thrilled. So we maybe overwhelmed them with some phone calls, but I knew that there's people that could really use that. So it was terrific. See nothing else? What's next? We have been asked to, by a counselor, to take Item A off the consent agenda, so do we have a motion for Item B. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Consent Agenda Items 8B.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 8B. Counselors, Bill Number 26, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes?
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour. The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 8A. Counselor Emmon? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Anna Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Artec Group LLC for the owner's representation services for the replacement municipal court in the amount of $530,604 plus a 10% contingency of $53,060 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $583,664.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 8A. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
Yes, I have really several of, okay, the questions on this, should I just go ahead and, and, okay, sequentially ask them?
Yeah.
Okay. When did council give direction to the city manager to get an owner's representative?
Mayor Protem, if I could respond, and then we'll have Assistant City Manager Lindsay come up and respond to the questions. But if the council recalls, and certainly the community recalls, back in December, you know, our recommendation to staff when we brought that municipal court forward was to authorize the staff to move to design, and the other ask of the council was to bring back a financial plan. We brought that financial plan back last, last study session, Monday, the first, and now we're at the point where we're beginning that, you know, that design, proceed-to-design process. And the first step in that design process is to hire the owner's rep. But, you know, I'm not the expert in this process. I will ask Assistant City Manager Lindsay to come forward and respond to any other questions that you may have, or the council as a whole.
Welcome. And did 213 die?
So I think City Manager Freitag hit the first question.
On what other projects, I don't remember using an owner's rep. On what other projects have we used an owner's rep? I mean, literally, the first time I heard about an owner's rep was Thursday, when I looked at the agenda.
I can't name another project off the top of my head where we've used an owner's representative. That said, in the seven years I've been with the city, we haven't done a project of this magnitude.
Well, we did a, we did a $24 million or $23 million biosolids of the watering plant at the sewer plant. That's roughly the same magnitude, a little less, well, half the price, sorry. And we didn't use an owner's rep there, did we?
I don't know the answer.
We did not use an owner's rep there.
I don't know the answer.
Got, got, no problem, no problem. So if we wanted to use a design and build to construct the plant, how would that work?
So staff is not yet at the point where we're prepared to recommend a manner in which to, to deliver the project. In fact, that's a large portion of what the owner's rep will be doing for us, is recommending an appropriate path forward to design and then construct and deliver this project. So their first step will be working on, working on a design RFP, and a key piece of that is what will be our construction delivery methodology.
So what are the advantages to having this owner's rep? I mean, I've looked it up online, but...
So the owner's rep will serve as an advocate for the city. They work to ensure that the project runs smoothly, that it stays on budget and on schedule, and they're really our representative with, with all the contractors that we will, we will work with. They allow us essentially to extend city staff, you know, that city staff that, that works on a, on a, you know, regular project basis year to year, while we're going to increase and do a major project in the meantime. So we see it as a, as a large value, especially with that expertise they're going to bring in.
We, according to the background, really information, there were eight people, there were eight groups that signed up to get this job, and they put in proposals, and then you had a second chance to that. But we don't have any of the bids. Like if you look at later in our agenda, when it comes to what, chip seal, we have three bids. When it comes to painting, we have three bids. When it comes to one we could only get one bid on, the price was only $4,000 different than what our engineers guesstimate was it of. So do you have the bids that these companies put in?
Yes, sir. So first off, let me clarify. So we used, we used a dual process here where we did a request for qualifications first, and eight firms submitted qualifications. From that, our team narrowed, narrowed, our selection committee narrowed the number of firms based on their qualifications, and we asked three of those firms to submit proposals. That was the Artec Group, which submitted a proposal for $530,604. The Coming Management Group, which submitted a proposal for $595,607. And the Dunakili Management Group, which submitted a proposal for $705,280.
Okay. In my, of the research, generally it said that owner's reps charge between 1% and 3% of the total cost. Was that your understanding?
Without extensive experience with an owner's rep, I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay. And we feel that we're ill-equipped to be our own rep?
Not, not ill-equipped. We believe that they bring expertise of a project of this management that will help us keep down costs and meet deadlines.
Okay. Isn't that, well, in one of the design and build approaches, it's a fixed price, and in another of our projects, we've used of the construction manager at risk to do that. So we're not contemplating those other things? So we're not contemplating those other things? I mean, is he going to save us $3 million?
I can't put a figure on it at this point in time, but they will be recommending to us a delivery methodology. And those options do include design-build, construction manager at risk. Everything is on the table at this point in time.
Okay. So where did they come up with their bids? Do they feel that $530,000 is 3% of the total price? Or 1% of the total price?
So it's based on an hourly rate and the projection of how many hours they expect to work on a project of this size. And that's based on their extensive experience for all of these groups with similar municipal projects.
Okay. But we've not one done, we've not done one in your experience. Maybe someone with longer tenure with the city can remember if we used a owner's rep?
I'm looking at Community Development Director Downing, who's been here a few years, former city engineer. He might be able to respond to that.
Counselor, I can't recall having a consultant by that name, owner's representative. We have used consultants before to serve in capacities of construction engineering, design work, that sort of thing, who do similar-type services, but I can't recall a project where we've had a owner's representative. But then again, I'm not familiar, very familiar, with buildings. Generally, we're working on infrastructure, that sort of thing. I could certainly do some research tomorrow and find out, for instance, whether there was an owner's rep on the Public Safety Building or this City Hall. But I don't recall any consultant help that used that particular title.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that's all the questions I have.
Mayor Protam?
I just want to make sure I understand well. So what I hear you saying, and I've went through a couple of projects where I've had to manage GCs and stuff on a much smaller scale. And typically, the challenge when you're taking people from their day jobs, and I think I heard you say this, is they have other things that they need to do, and this is a pretty big project. So I imagine then this group would help, not only with the plan, but will they help, like, after the plan, as far as are they going to be the ones who help implement that and, you know, actually manage it from this portion on? Or then would it be a different group?
They will work for the city, representing the city, essentially tomorrow through ribbon cutting.
That's what I thought. I wanted to make sure. Because to me, I understand what that, you know, because that's a big undertaking, like you said. And so I'm assuming that they would still work with, kind of manage the stakeholder group from internal with the city as far as like needs and stuff, as they go through the design phase. And then they would handle all the different GCs who are going to be on the project, which I imagine would be substantial for a project of this size. The other thing that I wanted to ask, because Counselor Baker's questions, you had sent us answers. And I just wanted to see if we couldn't have that email made part of the record for the minutes. Because there also was a good list that I think is useful for everybody to read as far as the different municipal projects that this particular group you chose had done versus the other ones. And then one thing of note I noticed was this was actually the low bid, which I know isn't necessarily always the way we go, depending on the project. Can you kind of at least just give a quick summary of why they got it over the other ones? I'm assuming it wasn't just cost. There was probably other things that went into that decision.
Yeah. Happy to address that. So we had a really cross-departmental selection panel that first went through the qualifications for the eight vendors that submitted, narrowed that down to three. And then from that point on, we actually split the process. So the vendors submitted cost proposals separate from their proposal for the work. And the interview, the selection panel, again, folks from across our organization, went through that, looking at their qualifications, looking at their fit, looking at their experience, who they would bring to the table from their firm. We talked to the folks that would specifically work on this project to see how they would fit with our team. Everyone individually scored those interviews. They tabulated those. The high, the winner of that process also happened to be the low bid in this instance. So we were happy to bring forward that recommendation.
Always a welcome thing. Well, I appreciate that. I guess the last thing I would say is I'm excited about this moving to its next phase. This has been talked about for a really long time. And to me, having safe, accessible justice is something really important for the city to provide for the resident. So I'm excited that we're moving this forward, and I appreciate staff's work on this.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah, I do have one more question. About how many hours did this group think it would take?
Ask Dana Castor, our construction project specialist on this project, to answer that one.
This bid included 3,893 hours.
And that is from now until 2026? Thank you.
I'd just like to say, when Counselor Baker sent in his questions, the thoroughness that you, even down to the second of where some things were on the tapes, if we wanted to re-listen, somebody had to have listened to that to get to that tape or to get to that exact minute. But it really helped to see the breadth and depth of what this person has done. So thank you so much for answering all of those questions. And I know some were, some repeats that we had done before, but I appreciate all your time. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
No.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to Resolution 15. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 15, Appointing One Alternate Member and Promoting One Member of the Alternate to Regular Member to the Environmental Advisory Board.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 15. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counsel, Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
I have been asked for a five-minute break.
..............................
Okay, we're back. We're down to 10A, First Reading Counselors' Bill Number 27. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 27 on First Reading to Approve an Ordinance Amending Title V of the Westminster Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Chapter 24 Concerning Short-Term Rental Licensing and Amending short-term rental licensing and amending Title XI, Chapter IV of the Westminster Municipal Code by the addition of a new Section 18 concerning short-term rentals as a land issue.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and segmented, passed Counselors' Bill Number 27. Are there any further discussion? Mayor Protam?
No discussion, just wanted to thank staff on this one because I know this has been talked about for a while and residents have been asking. I know that we don't really know if this is going to be the perfect solution, but it's a start and I appreciate the work put into it so far and thank you for the work that I'm sure you're going to have to do as we continue down this path.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, I'd like to find out if there, as I read it, I didn't find any limitations on the number of days a residence could be short-term rented.
Mr. Otzelberger, could you come forward and respond? Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Protam, Council Eric Otzelberger, Operations Manager for Community Development. Counselor Baker? No, there is no cap on the number of days per licensed premise.
Okay. So, someone could conceivably buy a really property and just make it a continuous short-term rental.
The ordinance before you allows one licensed premise per person?
Okay, and if it's owned by, like, say, a limited partnership?
That is considered a person.
Okay, so Bruce could own a limited part, could own one by himself and one with Charlene and one with his son and one with his other son and one with his daughter and one with his daughter and spouse and first son and on and on and on.
With all due respect, Counselor Baker, is that in the realm of possibility? Perhaps, but we haven't seen evidence of that in any of our neighboring communities that have had similar ordinances on the books for the last couple of years.
Okay, and what mechanism is in the ordinance that would, that would really regulate that, that would check up on that?
Well, once again, going back to the pole star, Counselor Baker, is really that one licensed premise per person, that is an ultimate limitation. We will have an abundance of information in the licensing applications and, you know, part of the intent with this ordinance before you this evening is a start on this journey. By no means is it intended as an end-all-be-all because this is still very much an evolving space. We're learning a lot, our neighbors are learning a lot. What we're intending here is to start somewhere and if we found ourselves challenged by a situation that you describe, we would be back in front of you, staff would be back in front of you suggesting potential amendments to said ordinance.
Okay. Well, those are all my questions. I just will have a statement when we, before we vote. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since Mr. Otzelberger is up here, I'll direct questions directly him. Some of these things have been brought up in that these, these homes are going to have to demonstrate health and safety maintenance like any other business, is that correct?
Correct, Counselor Seymour. So, as part of the license application, an applicant has to sign to give the city authority to conduct life, health, safety inspections at any reasonable time. So, that could be a proactive inspection or could be complaint-based as well. In addition to that ability for that, those public health, safety and welfare inspections, there'll have to be, an affidavit will need to be signed as part of the application for compliance with carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors, things of that nature. So, kind of a twofold approach where we will have some bandwidth for inspections, but then also that the owner is taking that, that full legal responsibility for those mandatory items per building code, per fire code.
So, as part of, part of practical experience, it's not dissimilar to our rental inspection program we already work with?
Correct. In, in, in working on this ordinance, Deputy City Attorney Greg Graham and I really tried, you know, for, for equity and for consistency to mirror what we have in the existing rental property maintenance code for, for this short-term rental ordinance before you.
Very good. And then also the question of occupancy was, was brought up and there is a reference to our occupancy code that we already have on the books. Could you explain that?
Absolutely, and occupancy has been one of the largest challenges, I think, in this policy issue and in the spirit of staying consistent with what the city already has on the books with its rental property maintenance code for long-term rentals. It's a two-factor process that, that's grounded in life safety. So, primary occupant, there must be at least 150 square feet of, of general living space and then 100 square feet for each occupant after that. That's the first test, but the more limiting test is the bedroom test, 70 square feet for the initial occupant and 30 square feet for each occupant after that. So, that's what's been on the books for years and years per IRC, IBC, International Residential Code, IBC. So, you know, really taking this angle from a life safety standpoint and trying to have consistency is hence what, what was before you this evening in the ordinance.
And the, I'm assuming that these licenses, they come up for renewal will be reviewed for complaints and compliance to have a renewal offered to them?
Absolutely, and you'll see in the, in the draft ordinance, it does discuss the authority of the director to consider substantiated violations in consideration and whether or not to renew. We had a lot of great input from focus groups, both community members and, and some operators and, and there was general consensus around a, a three strikes and you're out type of policy, but, but the city will retain the autonomy to determine, you know, what, what to pursue our enforcement mechanisms, but, you know, something that could be fairly egregious could be cause for consideration of a termination of a license or, or non-renewal and that authority is placed in this ordinance.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Emmons?
Counselor Seymour asked my question about occupancy, but my, but my question revolves, because we talked about what the definition of STR is and it's 30 days or less and this may be more appropriate question for Mr. Frankel, but, so if a person requires a license of the short-term rental, I would assume then it would be inherently legally binding if the definition is 30 days or less that their license requires them to have in that occupancy. Would that be, because we were talking about number of days for a person to be there. So, if it's defined as 30 days, would that be intuitive that there are only 30 days that they can be there in a legally binding process?
Yeah, if I could, I might ask Mr. Graham to come on up, but the definition of a short-term rental being below 30 days is for any one person staying in the property. So, if you rent your house for a year, your tenants are not short-term renters, right? They're staying more than 30, so they are long-term renters under our code. But I think what Mr. Otzelberger was alluding to is that the property itself can be rented for theoretically, I guess, 365 one-night stays in the course of a year. Is that fair, Mr. Otzelberger?
Yes, Attorney Frankel, you are correct and there is that limitation, the definition of party, one party cannot have a stay that transcends 30 days.
Okay. Okay, that, that's all my questions, thank you.
Counselor Numala?
All right, thank you. I just had a, one follow-up clarification for me from Counselor Baker's question regarding the ownership. So, if you're saying one person, if they are also listed in an LLC or a joint partnership, are they excluded from being able to do that or if they already have one under their name?
Attorney Frankel or Attorney Graham can correct me if I'm wrong, but, but each individual entity would, would be considered a separate person. And once again, I mean, we, there's no evidence that I'm aware of in our neighboring jurisdictions where you have individuals involved in 20-some LLCs or, you know, with, with ownerships of STRs, but the, you know, that definition of a person that we're utilizing in this ordinance is a pretty standard one with, so, you know, is, is it possible? Perhaps, but then once again, that's where this is intended as a starting place and I think if we saw a cause for concern that would really start dramatically impacting neighborhood character and putting public health, safety and welfare at risk, we would return to you with, with an amendment.
So, my second question is more on how would we know that there's a problem? Certainly, we can get complaints, but I would be interested in a potential measure that you could potentially work with Economic Development and their Balanced Housing Group to identify what that measure could be. One of the things that I have heard is increasing is just ownership of single-family homes by LLC and so that, just in the region, so that does concern me and if there's some type of measure that could be an indicator that that's increasing, that it's correlated with our short-term rentals, that I just, by saying we'll, we'll know it when we see it or kind of, I'd rather us have a measure?
Absolutely, Counselor Numala and Joy Talarico, who's been kind of coordinating efforts for us on short-term rentals with our third-party software partner, I think as we've discussed in previous study sessions, we've been tracking on a weekly basis the amount of activity. So, so we have some good data already and we'll have good data going forward. I mean, right now, look, just looking at the whole year for 2022, there were 210 properties in the city that had some degree of short-term rental activity. Could be as little as one night, could be two-thirds of the year. That, that is point four percent of our existing housing stock based on all residential units. So, I mean, one of the very basic metrics we'll be looking at is just how, how elastic is that number of, of short-term rentals? And I think if we saw some proliferation considering other policy, policies and policy considerations, you know, that may be a time for collaboration with Economic Development and sort of a timeout and looking at, you know, would, would we need to consider a cap on number of licenses or things of that nature? But over the last couple of years, that, that number of short-term rentals has stayed relatively static, but, but we certainly have good data and on a weekly basis, we're capturing that data and we'll have that to, to share as, as we go down the road and help inform potential future policy considerations.
Do you, I'm not winking my eye, my contact wanted to jump out of my eye. So, just second question on that is, so do we have an idea of what's good or bad with respect to the number of housing units that would be utilized as short-term rentals?
Boy, Counselor Numala, I can't really put a value judgment on that. I mean, it's, I know it's different for different communities where I had experience in mountain communities, as you know, that's, the number is quite high and part of just the reality of vacation communities and it puts a tremendous amount of stress on already squeezed workforce housing. There's probably some subjectivity to that. I think from a, from a reasonable person's standard or just gut check, you know, it's still that, that current 210 number out of 54,000 residential units, you know, it still seems not all that major. I've heard just anecdotally, the, the LLCs purchasing homes for long-term rentals may be more of a factor, at least with homeownership, but, but it's certainly something to monitor and at least we have the right partner to continue to capture that data and better understand the activity that's happening in the city.
And we are due to update our housing needs assessment soon?
I believe so.
Then it would be helpful to identify, you know, both long-term and short-term rental ownership trends and, you know, just availability of affordable housing to different layers of income within the city, so perhaps that can be addressed there. And then finally, the form that would be used that you'll develop, can you share that with council when that's available?
Absolutely. Pending decisions, you know, and as we highlighted in the agenda memo, you know, we'll be working promptly, I mean, pending decisions this evening to, to operationalize and we can certainly share that well, well in advance and have, have appropriate forms together.
All right, thank you.
And Mayor, if I could, to address the concerns that have been expressed, I think about the, the risk of multiple properties being owned by a single applicant, the code that's drafted for your consideration tonight at 524-4A requires that applicants be the fee owner of the property and if a property has multiple owners, all persons with an ownership interest must sign the application. So, the, the risk of, you know, multiple properties coming under this, that have one common owner, I think would be brought to the city's attention in that the rules that are drafted pretty clearly state that an applicant, no applicant may operate more than one licensed premises as a short-term rental and the applicant shall certify compliance with this requirement on each application submitted to the city.
Yeah, that's what I read and that's why I was asking that question because it seemed like, so theoretically they couldn't do more than one, but you're, because if we're having everybody sign their name on the, on the dotted line, but does that qualify for an LLC though? So, if they're a part of an LLC, not just?
I think they're going to have to disclose their ownership of that LLC, so their interest in the LLC would be disclosed on these applications and that would, if it became an issue, be highlighted, I think, for staff to then come back if necessary for an update to the code.
Thank you.
Counselor Zadi?
I was just going to add that it's, in that scenario, that would still be legal and it just gives us awareness, right? So, the disclosure just gives us awareness of if this is becoming an issue as to what, to what the attorney just said, so it's interesting. I think we should definitely keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Counselor Emmons?
So, Mr. Frankel, on your property LLC question, I, so that was asked in the study session in March, the answer I have is that a husband and wife scenario can have multiple properties and no, there's no real way to regulate, but was there, I don't think it was clear in my understanding as far as can the husband have one property and the wife or a partner have a different property and have two licenses?
So, I think that scenario differs from Counselor Baker's hypothetical where there is one person who's got a common interest in multiple properties. So, I suppose each family member could theoretically own their own short-term rental and so long as there wasn't a recurring ownership within that family, perhaps not a violation.
Counselor Emmons, it would, we would look to the deed of trust, you know, getting back to that fee owner. So, I mean, is it conceivable that, that a husband solely could have deed of trust for one property, spouse, wife could have for the other? Possibly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for all the work on this. I know we've had a ton of questions, you have answered a million questions for us and when I read everything for this packet, it was clear to me because of all of the other conversations we had, so thanks for all your hard work. Oh, sorry, Counselor Baker?
Yes, I will, I will be really voting against this, okay? When we first brought this up, I asked for some kind of limitation, like the owner had to be present and then they could rent out a room. to be present and then they could rent out a room. And I recognize that this is going on in our really community right now, and this is a move to regulate it somehow. But I see much more negative details in this. I am a great believer in neighborhoods, and I think a neighborhood is more than just the sum of all the people who own a property in it. A neighborhood has a life of its own. And in my idealized 1953 neighborhood, everyone would own their house, and they'd live in their house, and there'd be continuity, and on and on. Of course, this isn't 1953, and I don't have my ideal neighborhood, so we have to have some exceptions to this, okay? But I think we diminish our neighborhoods when we don't have the vast majority of owners living in their neighborhood, caring about their neighbors, and making their common dreams with their neighbors come to life. I mean, I think that's why you can drive around right now, the metro Denver area, and you can see neighborhoods where the people who live there care about their neighborhoods and other neighborhoods where it's not so much. And that bleeds into everything. It bleeds into how attractive a neighborhood is. It bleeds into how valuable houses in a neighborhood are. It bleeds into how safe a neighborhood is, okay? There are challenges in rental properties, and we struggle with them all the time, and the neighborhoods struggle with them all the time. But I think by formalizing this, we turn and... How many homes on a block have to be short-term rental homes before it's a less attractive neighborhood? I don't think it's that many. And if you don't know who's living to you, and it changes a couple times in a month, where are the bonds to that neighbor? Where are the connections to that neighbor? If you have to go to the records and look up who the LLC is, how is that beneficial to you? How do you fix your fences? And how do you do all those other things that I think are vital to a neighborhood? And I think this is another step that's going to hurt our neighborhood. And I can't tell you how many there have to be to hurt the neighborhood. And of course, with this being a complaint-driven basis, it's my experience that most people don't complain. They suffer in silence. I think there's even a line from the Declaration of Independence that says people are known to suffer a long train of abuses before they do something about it. So that's why I'll be voting against this, because I think it's gonna have a terrible consequence on our neighbors.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. You know, I, from the start, have been back and forth on diving into the data on this because it all comes down to property rights and what that looks like. You know, looking at the comments, even that, even the comments provided and the feedback provided when staff did outreach, it was back and forth on, it wasn't a straight line this way, and it wasn't a straight line this way. And it was very telling as far as how people were feeling about short-term rentals and its license. And I will say, the last study session meeting is kind of where we had a conversation, and we did talk about where we were landing. And in that reference, Counselor Seymour had mentioned that, you know, he sees this as a business. And Counselor Baker saw that Counselor Baker wanted to see our neighborhoods kept in a residential nature. And that really kind of set in with me as far as, okay, that makes sense, as far as keeping our residential nature within our communities within Westminster, but also seeing this as a business and hitting the checkmarks that need to happen in order for a property, private property, to own and operate under a license. So that really kind of brought in and honed in on a decision for me for, you know, looking at this. It is very bare bones, and it is only affecting, you know, half a percent of our residents. But I feel that, you know, if we, in a sense, if, I think this is a good structure as far as getting the items on place on our books to say, here's what we can do and here's what we can't do. Now, it doesn't mean that it can't change, and we can't tailor it and shift it to how we need it, but this is a good start. And I think that there's, you know, I'm trusting in our property owners that, you know, they're gonna upkeep on their property. And it's, a few bad apples doesn't mean that, you know, that entirely changes the nature of a residential neighborhood. So with that, I am comfortable moving forward with the information I have on voting for this tonight.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I absolutely agree with Counselor Baker that our neighborhoods are critical to our city and that good neighbors make for good neighborhoods. But we cannot ignore the fact that, nor can we bury our head in the sand and say, all right, we know this is happening out there, we're just going to ignore it, because that gives us no mechanism for us to deal with these. And so that's the issue that I think we have before us. Is this perfect? No. Don't want to let the perfect get in the way of the good. Counselor Zadi, very important fact on that one there is that this is not perfect. We got an email from one of the stakeholders that has one short-term rental in our city, and they kind of encapsulize that. They appreciated all the input that they got, and they understand that, you know, it's not perfect from their side, nor some of the other fellow owners that they know, or the residents either. So we've come to this maybe in the middle, and we have an ability to adapt this. But to ignore the fact that it's going on there in the marketplace and to not have any controls in place where we can inspect, make sure that the health, life, safety of those people who are renting there are not managed, and then have really no way to have a complaint process through renewal and application like we do on many other of our businesses here in the city that are under that auspices. So I'm gonna be voting in favor of this. It's not perfect, but I think it's a step in the right direction, and we're gonna get more data, and we're going to have a better idea of the products that are being rented. This is one of those things where the market also drives it. If someone, if someone has a property that is not up to snuff, every person that is on that site knows about it, and they know about it immediately. It's kind of like Nextdoor. If you don't like what people put on there, people tell you about it. So it's an immediate feedback loop, like many things on social media as too, and they get rated as stars, and then they can't get the price that they're looking for either. So that's a little bit of the self-regulation in that market. Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, I'm supportive of this. I want to address a couple of things. You know, I understand the want for community in our residential neighborhoods, and I think that that is an important factor. That doesn't always mean owner occupied. I grew up in countryside, still live in countryside. My folks, actually, my dad, retired policeman with a couple other policemen, used to own a couple houses over by Station 5 that they invested in and rented out. That little loop there across from Station 5 and actually next to, and what, down by Jessica Ridgeway's Park, that was a lot of rental property for the majority of my life. And we've seen kind of a turn in that because of the housing market, and you see a lot more owner occupied. Point being is, different places and for different people and different places and points in their life, and we talk on this council a lot about different opportunities towards housing in the city. And I think that, you know, this is no different to me. We have rental. The short-term rental, I think that it's important that there are some means that I think it's a good use. Think of people who are traveling for business. Oftentimes, maybe they have like a two-week stint, because, especially with so many people working remote nowadays, most of the jobs I'm looking at, they're like, well, you gotta spend a week in this region, or, you know, whatever it is. The other thing is around vacationing. We talked about that in the study session. The other thing that we talked about in the study session that I don't think should be lost is some people are able to help their own finances by renting out their property for a short amount of time. I know my brother, his in-laws have a beach house that's like a generational beach house that goes back, I think, four generations for their family that they're only able to afford because they're able to do this with it, but then they vacation there when the family has vacation. So granted, we don't have a beach here in Westminster. I still think that it's important that we have all these different kind of options, but to Counselor Seymour's point, that we're also regulating it because some of the concerns that we've heard around the party houses and those kind of things. And so if we're able to know where they're at and know that that's an Airbnb and we get complaints, there's some additional resources and tools in the toolbox to address it. So like we've heard, isn't perfect, but I think it's a step in the right direction, and I don't think that we can just ignore this market of housing.
Counselor Nermella?
It's been said a bunch, so I'll just state why I'm supporting this, even though for sure I have my concerns about the overall impact of short-term rentals on our housing supply. But in essence, it is, having it in our code allows us to address it. And so that's, just as Mayor Protam said and Counselor Seymour before that, if we don't have it, if we don't regulate it, then we can't respond to it adequately. And then having a license program allows us to track it, particularly which is for my concern. So I think it's a good move overall.
Counselor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just throw in my support for this as well. It's happening anyway, and this just gives us a mechanism, like Counselor Seymour said, to start getting some visibility into what's happening and start regulating it. And also, I just want to say that I'm actually quite happy, Counselor Baker, that we are not in the 1950s. I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be able to have a house here. So it's actually a good thing that we're moving forward, and progress should always move forward. Thank you.
And I'll be supporting because with questions that I had during the start of it, and not sure, but seeing what's happening in my neighborhood with the LLCs buying houses and using them for long-term rentals, I agree, we need the framework so if it doesn't work with something, we can change it. And with that, the only thing I'd like to add to this very exhaustive conversation is, can we somehow put this, I don't know if the right thing is six months down the road, but can we have a check-in of, once it gets started? That makes sense of how things, what we're seeing?
Yes. If you remember the parking enforcement transition, you had asked for a six-month update. We'll do that in July, and so we can do similarly here.
Okay. Just wanted it on a calendar somewhere. Thanks. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Oh.
Mayor Protam Damat?
Yes.
Counselor, and Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to item 10B. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me get to the right page here. I move to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with Mark Young Construction LLC for the amount of $4,354,873 for construction manager general contractor services at the Swim and Fitness Center remodel, bringing the construction contract amount from $29,272 for pre-construction services to $4,384,145 for the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, plus an additional 12% contingency in the amount of $509,630 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $4,893,775.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10B. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Oh, Mayor.
I'm sorry. I just thought it was on because you made the motion.
Oh, sorry. Usually it is.
Sorry.
Yeah. I just had a question. Our normal contingency is 10%. I'm wondering if we're bumping this 12% due to cost fluctuations or what that would be.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor Protam. Counsel, Tim Lockman, the Recreation Services Manager. It is a little bit different with the 12%. This is a 48-year-old building that has gone through about three or four different renovations, some that we don't even have plans for. So we went a little bit more, just as we start to open up the building, and not for sure what we're gonna find is why the additional contingency is there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Damat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10C. Counselor Emmons?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the Slurry Seal Project with the low bidder Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $1,150,834 plus a contingency of $230,173 plus an additional $45,000 for streets impacted by utility waterline replacement trench cuts for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $1,426,700 in 2023.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10C1. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Damat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10C2. Counselor Emmons?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with options for four one-year renewals subject to annual appropriation for 2024, 2025, 2026, 2027 for the Slurry Seal Project with the low bidder Vance Brothers Incorporated, based on the bid's unit prices, which cannot exceed the annual percent of change for the Denver Aurora Lakewood Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers each year. This authorization will allow for yearly fluctuating quantities and a project contingency of 20% each year for the Slurry Seal Project, plus an additional $45,000 for utility trench cuts each year.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10C2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Damat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10D1. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the 2023 Bridge Pedestrian Railing Paint Project with the low bidder Southern Road and Bridge LLC in the amount of $434,000 plus a contingency in the amount of $86,800 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $520,800 in 2023.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10D1. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Damat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10D2. Counselor Seymour?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute options for four one-year renewals for 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027 for the Bridge Pedestrian Railing Paint Project with the low bidder Southern Road and Bridge LLC, based on the bid's unit prices, which cannot exceed the annual percentage of change of the Engineering New Report Index each year. This authorization will allow for yearly fluctuating quantities and project contingencies of 20% each year.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10D2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Damat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10E1. Counselor Emmons?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Endell Construction Incorporated for the 2023 Asphalt Pavement Preservation High Density Mineral Bond HA5 Project in the amount of $237,881, excuse me, $237,881, excuse me, $237,881 plus a contingency of $35,683 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $273,564 in 2023.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass... It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10E1. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10E2. Counselor Emmons?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with options for four one-year renewals subject to annual appropriation for 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027 for the Asphalt Pavement Preservation High Density Mineral Bond HA5 Project with the low bidder Andale Construction Incorporated, based on the bid's unit prices that cannot exceed the annual percent of the change of the Denver Aurora Lakewood Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers each year. This authorization will allow for yearly fluctuating quantities and a project contingency of 20% each year.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10E2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
It is 9:39 and this meeting is adjourned.